Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is John Main. I'm John Main, Chairman of the Clinton Planning and Zoning Commission. It is 7:34. Sorry to be late. I call this regular meeting to order. We have a call. And this meeting is now in session. Will the current please, please call it a roll?
John Main.
Here.
Lisa McDonald. Cynthia Watts.
Here.
Enzo Mott Delia.
Here.
Pamela Fritz.
Here.
Judy Guerra.
Here.
Dennis Renter.
Here.
Alan Havitz.
Michael Rossi.
Here.
Royce Kirk Carter.
Here.
Christine Gopiel.
Here.
Mark Raccano.
Here.
Okay. I can see all bits now. I'll see. First caller for you.
Yes.
And Christine Goble for Alan. Thank you. Brings us to the first item on the agenda, Chairman's comments. Before I continue directly with Chairman's comments, I intend to bore you. I apologize, but the gravity of information that was brought to me during the last three days, I swore to this commission that I would do the best of my abilities to review everything that was brought to me, despite the fact it ruins nearly everything. I know it's holding for that. And I hope you'll be patient and work with me in this. Any comments I make tonight before you are what I believe to be factual. It may not actually be factual. I hold no prejudice against anyone, and I hope they hold no prejudice against me for any comments that I make during Chairman's comments tonight. And they are absolutely in good faith, in the best interest of this commission, its members, the town, in regards to one of the items on our agenda this evening. Okay. I'll start with the first item that I wanted to bring up in Chairman's comments. I had to write it down. You get lost in conversation sometime, so I may have to edit it on the fly. My last conversation with counsel was, what was that, 5:00 roughly? I was at the library with my daughter, and on the cell phone, it was very difficult to do it. I was by myself, single parent again, wife's in night school, so she came home, so I didn't have to bring her to the meeting. Okay. Chairman's comments of the Clinton Planning and Zoning Commission, 2040912. I chose to serve on the Clinton Planning and Zoning Commission from 10 years ago, more or less, with the ideal that I would be able to serve my community, protect my rights and the rights of other, rights of other property owners in our town as well. That's why I chose to serve. I've always regarded my function here in this forum as part of a regulatory process to govern land use for the people of Clinton. In my official capacity this evening, I'm asked directly to act both as Chairman of Clinton Planning and Zoning Commission, behold to the bylaws of this commission, and as always bound to the Code of Ethics and the discharge of my office. And it is my intent, to the best of my ability, to uphold both. For the bylaws of the Clinton Planning and Zoning Commission, Article 4, Section 2, Members and Their Responsibility. No member of the commission shall have individual authority of decision or action. All business of the commission shall be conducted by the commission as a body, and shall be conducted only when the commission is properly in session. Under the Town of Clinton Code of Ethics, Section H1 and 2. Any public official, prospective public official or employee may request the Board of Ethics to issue an advisory ethics opinion regarding the propriety of a matter or matters which the person is or may become a party. Any request for an advisory opinion shall be written by the person making the request. The commission may make public any, make public all or any part of such agreement as it deems desirable and in the public trust. Advisory opinions rendered by the Board, rendered by the Board shall be deemed to be final decisions. Any advisory opinion concerning the person who requested the opinion and who acted in reliance thereon in good faith shall be an absolute defense, as it deems desirable and in, ah, wait, 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 sorry. In good faith shall be an absolute defense in any matter brought under the provisions of this code, any matter under the provisions of this code. By way of example, I just want to make a clear point, point of discussion. This is the Code of Planning and Zoning, this file right here, that entire book we are responsible for. The entire thing, on the back, I've been looking at it for 10 years. This book also was issued to me as planning and zoning official. And quite frankly, it's been a struggle for 10 years to come up to speed and to understand the whole thing and actually deal with it. But I must remind you that the Clinton Town Code of Ethics consists of this document here, these pages. So I'm beholden to this and that. And I have read both steadily, to the best of my ability, for the last 30 days, including yesterday at Easter. All day, since I've been there 30 years. I am bound by our bylaws to not act as an individual, but as a member of this body. The matter of the Board of Ethics memorandum of decision is on tonight's agenda, to be discussed by our commission, and therefore I present and disclose my concerns with the Planning and Zoning Commission before we proceed with any deliberations or action on the matter. It is imperative that all members of this commission act to uphold both our bylaws and the Clinton Ethical Code in order to restore the public trust. The Selectman's Office action on this matter was in support of the findings of the Board of Ethics, and they respectfully thanked Cindy and Lisa for their service on the commission, and asked that they resign in order to restore the public trust. The first ever memorandum of decision of the Board of Ethics is important to me because it sets the precedence for all future concerns of the Board of Ethics as to their procedures, values, and abilities to render decisions, and how we will govern our ethical standards and our expectations to all for whom the Ethical Code applies. I applaud the efforts of the Board of Ethics Commission, and I'm honored by their decision to send it to this commission for our review. The Board of Ethics letter addressed to, and I quote, "Planning and Zoning Chairman John Main," dated March 8, 2012, states the following. Enclosed, you will find a copy of the Board of Ethics Minutes of Memorandum of Decision on the above referenced matter, that of Peggy Adler complaining versus Lisa McDonald and Cynthia Watts' response. We trust that you will act in support of the Board's findings and conclusions. We hope to hear from you within 30 days, as required by the Town of Clinton's Code of Ethics. We did, I did, after requesting attorney's information on how I should proceed in that fashion, because I was, had to answer, by 30 days, 30 days was up, I believe, last Thursday? And in my haste, I simply directed the Attorney Royston to advise me, should I answer, and what with, and what would be applicable? I have, I am certain that you can attest to that fact. Attorney Royston is present here. We did send a letter to the Board of Ethics stating that it was added to tonight's agenda within a 30-day period, which was the only action that was taken at that time. So we met everything that was required according to the Ethical Code, as far as I understand. So far, we've come full circle, decision rendered, it is what it is. I've spent hours of my personal time taxing my work and family life over the issue of the Board of Ethics findings against two of our commission members. Never before has this commission had to respond to a ruling of the Board of Ethics, and never before has the question of recusal on the part of any elected official in Clinton been so publicly displayed that I am aware of. The definition of finding, when used in reference to a court's decision, the term means a conclusion of fact, and not the conclusion of law. The Board of Ethics is not held to this definition, if I phrase it correctly, as I understand my interpretation of the Town Ethics Code. Section 7, General Procedures, Complaints, Time Limits, Investigation, Notice, Hearings, Item 2. Hearings shall not be subject to the rules of court, except the right, 1, item 1, of an accused to confront and cross-examine his accuser, or his or her accuser. Two, of every witness or party to be represented by an attorney, by law, of his or her choice. Three, of every witness to decline to answer questions, in accordance with the Fifth Amendment right to the Constitution of the United States. Before we should proceed with discussions about the Board of Ethics memorandum, I must bear to, I must bring to bear some grave concerns that I have with the Ethical Code as it may relate to potentially unethical actions that this commission may become party to. In compliance with my role as Chairman of this commission, and as I am asked to act in that capacity at the behest of the Board of Ethics, I have questions to which I feel I am obligated to ask of the Board of Ethics as a member of this commission, and under the Town Clinton Code of Ethics, Section H1 and 2. I would like to state specifically that I would like to try to submit those questions to the Board of Ethics, potentially to the Board of Selectmen, about my concerns, as they may be compelled to take some further actions on of their own beyond their current response to the Board of Ethics. I don't know. I labored over this document a long time, so please bear with me. I'm concerned that I and other Clinton Planning and Zoning members could potentially be in violation of the Code of Ethics of the Town of Clinton by deliberating and potentially acting in regard to the Board of Ethics memorandum of decision that appears on our agenda tonight. I, the first question that I feel that we, I, we, the Planning and Zoning Commissions must have resolved through the advisory opinion of the Board of Ethics is, in my capacity as a commission member of the Clinton Planning and Zoning Commission, and by the commission as a body, acting as a body, will I or we be in violation of any part of the Code of Ethics if I or we were aware that an issue to be deliberated and potentially acted upon by, I as a commission member, or us as a commission, may potentially have been created through unethical acts by others who may be subject to the Town of Clinton Code of Ethics or accountable at a future date or past date? All right, to clarify, to clarify my question, and only just for clarification, I'm providing my specific awareness of facts, and of course, they may not be entirely known to be facts. That's for the Board of Ethics to help determine. And questions for your commission to deliberate, that's my thing on how I would try to phrase that. In review of the Board of Ethics Minutes and Memorandum of Decision, the Ethical Code of the Town of Clinton, the bylaws of the Clinton Planning and Zoning Commission, conversations I had with counsel through the Clinton Planning and Zoning Commission, and other historical data, I gained knowledge of the following relationships between a member of the Board of Ethics and the town's attorney, and the Watts family. I'm very concerned with deliberation of possible actions that may be undertaken by myself as an individual member of Clinton Planning and Zoning Commission, and the Clinton Planning and Zoning Commission acting as one body as required by the Clinton Planning and Zoning Commission bylaws. On the Board of Ethics memorandum of decision may cause myself, or possibly the Clinton Planning and Zoning Commission, to be in violation of the Clinton Ethical Code by my and/or our participation in deliberations and future actions, if any. Subsection A, I became aware that Ken McDonald, Chairman of the Board of Ethics, is the partner of the law firm of Gould, Larson, Bennett, Wells, and McDonald, P.C., and the town attorney, his partner, is John Bennett. Fair enough, known fact. Please, Board of Ethics, further advise me or us, the Planning and Zoning Commission, on the following. If this is true, then does not this relationship prove to be in direct conflict between the Town Clinton Code of Ethics, Section 7-2? The Board will use, the town attorney and clerical staff will be provided, and Section 4 of the Ethical Code itself, where it states should not, Section 4 of the Ethical Code, which, let me state that, 4 of the Ethical Code, I can read right here, the Ethical Code. You know what? I actually spelled it out from the memorandum decision itself, so I actually took the time to write it that way. I will continue. If this is true, I'll put down, Section 4, should not our town, should not our town attorney have advised his partner to step down concerning this potential conflict of interest? Furthermore, if this is true, then shouldn't have the Board of Ethics member, Ken McDonald, upheld his understandings as shown by the memorandum of decision of the Board of Ethics and recused himself from the proceeding so as not to be in violation of the Town of Clinton Code of Ethics. This would reflect the Board of Ethics belief described in its memorandum of decision that Section 4A of the Town Clinton Code of Ethics is intended, intended to prevent the appearance of a conflict of interest when acting in an official capacity on behalf of the town. Summarize, actually, there's more questions, I had a lot of questions. I believe that the law firm of Gould, Larson, Bennett, Wells, and McDonald, P.C., used to represent the Clinton Planning and Zoning Commission. Pretty sure they did, yeah. They, they would let go and replaced by Nizalo Pickett and Allen, P.C., to remove the potential conflict of interest between the town's attorney, John Bennett, and decisions made by the Clinton Planning and Zoning Commission, if we should come under suit or have the town sue us, or we have to sue the town for some reason. The Planning and Zoning Commission member involved in the process of finding and replacing was Cynthia Watts, a person described in the Board of Ethics memorandum, presided and acted upon by Ken McDonald, Chairman of the Board of Ethics. Please, Board of Ethics, further advise me or us on the following. If this is true, then does not this relationship prove to be in direct conflict between the Town Clinton Code of Ethics, Section 7-2? The Board will use the town attorney, meaning he must use our town attorney, and clerical staff will provide it. I'm sorry, this is repetitive, but I thought I should probably try to make it clear, I'm not an attorney. And Section 4 of the Ethical Code, should not our town attorney have advised his partner to step down concerning this potential conflict of interest? If this is true, then shouldn't have the Board of Ethics member, Ken McDonald, upheld his understanding as shown by the memorandum of decision that the Board of Ethics, of the Board of Ethics and recused himself from proceedings so as not to be in violation of the Town Code, the Town of Clinton Code of Ethics. This should, this would reflect the Board of Ethics belief described in its memorandum of decision that Section 4A of the Town of Clinton Code of Ethics is intended to prevent the appearance of a conflict of interest when acting in official capacity on behalf of the town. A relationship, further, further point, a relationship existed between Ken McDonald and the Planning and Zoning member Cynthia Watts, where her brother Watts was previously employed by the law firm of Gould, Larson, Bennett, Wells, and McDonald, P.C., the same firm representing the town today, which he is a partner. I believe John Watts performed tax collections work for our town under that firm as an associate attorney, if I am correct in my understanding of the relationship between them. I'm privy to this knowledge as it directly relates to taxes that were owed to the town by our Planning and Zoning legal counsel. Counsel reminded me, see, after 10 years, you forget things, but if you actually do the research, you'll, you'll figure it out. Counsel reminded me that he is still defending the Planning and Zoning approval of 161 East Main Street Village Walk LLC. Last update I received was today on that issue. This defense of the Planning and Zoning Commission-approved site plan, of which he referred to, is represented, if I am correct, by Vincent Semino, who in fact is the former Clinton RTC chairman. If I have read the facts of the Planning and Zoning Commission records correctly, Cynthia Watts voted on the approval of that application, to which we are partying in defense of a suit on behalf of Vincent Semino. Please, Board of Ethics, further advise me or us on the following. If this is true, does, then does not this relationship prove to be in direct conflict between the Town Clinton Code of Ethics, Section 7-2? The Board will use the town attorney, and clerical staff will be provided, and Section 4 of the Ethical Code? Should not our town attorney have advised his partner to step down concerning this potential conflict of interest? If this is true, then shouldn't have the Board of Ethics member, Ken McDonald, upheld his understanding as shown by the memorandum of decision of the Board of Ethics and recused himself from the proceedings so as not to be in violation of the Town of Clinton Code of Ethics? This would reflect the Board of Ethics belief described in its own memorandum of decision that Section 4A of the Town Clinton Code of Ethics is intended to prevent the appearance of a conflict of interest when acting in official capacity on behalf of the town. At some point, John Watts, after leaving the law firm of Gould, Larson, Bennett, Wells, and McDonald, P.C., in some time, I'm not certain of the facts, after doing so, acquired the tax work of our town through a bidding process, thereby removing it from the firm that formerly represented our town tax collection interests. Makes the question, who was that firm? Please, Board of Ethics, further advise me on the following. If this is true, then does not this relationship prove to be in direct conflict between the Town Clinton Code of Ethics, Section 7-2? The Board will use the town attorney and clerical staff will be provided in Section 4 of the Ethical Code? Should not our, our town attorney have advised his partner to step down concerning this potential conflict of interest? If this is, further, if this is true, then shouldn't have the Board of Ethics member, Ken McDonald, upheld his understandings as shown by the memorandum of decision of the Board of Ethics and recused himself from the proceedings so as not to be in violation of the Town of Clinton Code of Ethics? This would reflect the Board of Ethics belief described in its memorandum of decision that Section 4A of the Town Clinton Code of Ethics is intended to prevent the appearance of a conflict of interest when acting in an official capacity on behalf of the town. The second question that I feel both I and we, the Planning and Zoning Commission, must have resolved through the advisory opinion of the Board of Ethics is, if I, as Chairman, and by extension, the Planning and Zoning Commission, do deliberate and act on a matter of the Board of Ethics item on our agenda with any of its members potentially aware of the information that we would provide further reason to believe they may be acting or participating in an unethical act under the Code of Ethics for the Town of Clinton. Would they also be held, I'm not certain if this is the right word, I tried in my haste last night to finish off the conclusions of this, and I got your spell check, and it was difficult, and I was tired, but I'm gonna use the word. Would they also be held culpable in the unethical act by way of not disclosing the matter as described by Section 4, Conflict of Interest, Item E? To clarify my question further, I offer the following information for deliberation by the Board of Ethics. I believe that the law firm of Gould, Larson, Bennett, Wells, and McDonald, P.C., used to represent the Clinton Planning and Zoning Commission. They were let go and replaced by Nizalo Pickett and Allen, P.C., to remove the potential conflict of interest between the town's attorney, John Bennett, and legal representation to the decisions made by the Clinton Planning and Zoning Commission. I was contacted after the Board of Ethics documentation was reported to this commission, and during my review process, by the Planning and Zoning attorney, Royston, concerning the conflict he felt in answering questions directed to him by the Town of Clinton's attorney, John S. Bennett. I believe that the professional contact between the attorneys was not meant in any way to, to, I wrote this wrong, it says to harm, what's wrong? To harm or any party. Let me be clear on that point. I believe they were acting in a professional interest, as attorneys do. Attorneys talk to each other, contractors talk to each other. It happens. I believe that the intent was simply just to ask a question. I advise our attorney, and I won't point to the question, it's really not relevant. I advise our attorney that the nature of the question was perfectly fine to respond to, and simply asked that in regard to any matter going forward concerning the Board of Ethics, be held under attorney-client privilege, and he responded to Attorney Bennett, and the matter was closed. I mention this only as it relates to the Board of Ethics decision directly under Section 7, General Procedures, Complaints, Time Limits, Investigation, Notice, Hearings, of the Town Clinton Code of Ethics, Section D, Item 2. The Board shall have the power and the duty to investigate and hear complaints concerning allegations of violations of this code. If our town's attorney is capable and professionally connected to and comfortable to speak to Attorney Royston on such a level, and Ken McDonald, as a partner to the very same firm he is required to use for legal consultation and advisement, as well as the members of the Board of Ethics have the duty to investigate the matters before them, how could it be possible that they refer to the evidence provided that investigative commission and authority charged to uphold our town's Ethical Code could possibly declare in a final finding that, and I quote, well, no, I can't quote, I'm not certain, doesn't look right, hang on. How could they possibly declare in a final finding that the respondent's testimony has hearsay? They could call each other on the phone, they, "John, it's Ken, I want to talk to Dave, he got his number." Could be that easy. And I repeat, they had a duty, a duty to investigate and hear complaints concerning allegations of violation of this code. The power and the duty, very strong words. The power and the duty, very strong words. I was very deeply concerned, deeply concerned in regard to this contact and very deeply concerned how it would affect the validity of the Board of Ethics and its findings as they are compelled to have the highest standards and decisions and seriously harm any respondent's image in the eye of the public and tarnish their reputation indefinitely in regards to their ethical abilities. Attorney Royston's immediate response to me as Chairman was exemplary. He upheld his duties and responsibilities as attorney to the Planning and Zoning Commission by contacting me, asked, and asking me how I should proceed. I commend your efforts. Thank you. I was so concerned that I did ask that, uh, Mr. Royston, Attorney Royston, to work under attorney-client privilege. I'd already said that part. So again, if this is true, if this is true, if it is, then does not this relationship prove to be in direct conflict between the Town Code of Ethics Section 7.2, the board will use the town attorney, clerical staff will be provided? In other words, that section clearly states that the people on the Board of Ethics have the responsibility to speak to John about it. They even said so in their proceedings, they're supposed to. If this is true, then shouldn't have the Board of Ethics member Ken McDonald upheld his understandings as shown by the memorandum of decision where he deliberated in this and the entire ethical Board of Ethics deliberated in it together. Shouldn't he have recused himself from the proceedings so as not to be in violation of the Town of Clinton Code of Ethics? This would reflect the Board of Ethics belief described in its very own first, and I remind you, first and only memorandum of decision that I am aware of, that Section 4A of the Town of Clinton Code of Ethics is intended to prevent the appearance of a conflict of interest when acting in official capacity on behalf of the town. Yeah, I'm sorry, but I have to read that because I am concerned, these are grave concerns. And I don't want to cause anybody to do anything but answer some points for us on our behalf, so please be patient. In closing on that portion of my statement, I remind all those who have heard my comments tonight and those who may choose to review them, that I do not present them for complaint or to hold any party mentioned in them in any way accountable. I'm asking for a point of opinion over. Thirty days accountability, due to Board of Ethics, have expired as of Thursday, April 5th, I believe, is that 5th? My calculations are correct as the Board of Ethics declared at the last public hearing on this matter, and I agree with those findings. The ethical code does not describe any sanctions or to what degree or what offense on this matter should be needed out or what will come of this matter of the Board of Ethics and its findings. I'll just let that stand for a little while, I wrote it. Section 7, General Procedures, Complaints, Time Limits, Investigations, Notice, Subsections 3 and 4. Upon finding of a violation of any provision of this ethical code, the Board will refer the matter to an appropriate appointing or supervisory authority. The authority affected will report within thirty calendar days of the receipt of the Board of Ethics ruling to the Board the action taken, if any. Person subject to this code found not in violation of this code will be reimbursed by the town for their reasonable legal fees, except no legal fees shall be paid for any services rendered before the finding of probable cause. Again, I assert that I have made these comments in regard to matters before this commission in absolute good faith to safeguard the members of this commission from further potential wrongdoing and my efforts are met only with the hope to restore the public's trust as directed by our selectmen to seek point of opinion from the Board of Ethics. And I may have misstated that, the point of opinion refers to the fact that I want their opinion on this, as stated in the ethical code. On the two questions and supporting questions of ethics as they relate to tonight's agenda and the very grave concern of your Chairman as required in this quorum of the membership of the Clinton Planning and Zoning Commission. For the role played by this commission, it took from the fall of 2009 to the winter time of 2011 to first, to deliberate, vote to deny, defend against litigation, vote to mediate rather than use tax dollars to continue that defense, that is my opinion as Chair. I don't know that other members share that opinion as far as why we voted to mediate. We voted again to allow potentially the revisitation of the original application and it was agreed upon thereafter through the mediation process. And finally, a fourth vote, a vote, a fourth vote after further deliberations and even under the strain of having three members, three, I totally forgot that meeting. We had three members accused of potential conflicts by our own membership prior to that final vote. It is my opinion, we did not rush to judgment as a commission through any of this process by any standard. I was there the entire time, most of which as Chairman of this commission elected by my fellow commission members, all decisions. I believe in them all and I depend on them to uphold our bylaws and the Code of Ethics of the Town of Clinton. If they had questions of point of opinions for the Board of Ethics, I ask you all, please take the time to ask inviting the Board of Ethics for point of opinion. Before we deliberate further on this issue, I would ask, please table the issue when it comes up on our agenda this evening until we have questions to my points of interest of opinion requests from the Board of Ethics and any more points of opinion you may have as a result of the full disclosure of the fact that I've, as I believe that to be, that I have discovered during my review of this unprecedented and only ruling found against members of this commission. Furthermore, I would ask that in your motion, please direct the clerk of Planning and Zoning Commission, Julia Plutum, to transcribe and submit the Chairman's comments from tonight to the Council for Planning and Zoning Commission, Attorney Royston, with the instruction that it be prepared in proper form. In regard, I can't, cannot testify that I've actually written this document well enough to be certain that my questions are phrased correctly and that's why I ask that you help in doing so. So I would like not only my Chairman's comments, but if you have concern as individual members on phrasing and you can assist me in any way, I would appreciate it because I've really thought about this. I put a lot of effort into it. So yeah, I had that, my comments, as I have probably, because I've edited this as I've read it, the written comments aren't really absolutely valid, they have to be, I don't know. Had to be prepared in proper form to the selectmen's office as well as the Board of Ethics for point of opinion in regard to the questions that I have presented and the supporting questions associated with them and that we will be able to proceed after they have returned those points of opinion to the Clinton Planning and Zoning Commission. And I say this with absolute clarity to all of you, please. Ultimately, a great number of people working for this town, elected, unpaid, paid Board of Education members, they are all mentioned under Section 2 of the Clinton Town Code of Ethics. They will be governed according to the precedents the Board of Ethics has set by the findings against our fellow commission members. I remind you, in their first and only ruling that I am aware of as a commission, as a board, very serious, I take this entire thing extremely seriously. I've had, I have other documents to read briefly, please bear with me. Your decision. I have not read this document as a signed document, I did receive a draft in advance. It is from Nizala Pickett and Allen, our attorney, Mr. Royston, and is pursuant to a request made by Kirk Carr, Mr. Carr. In good faith, you did email me with your concerns and I did respond with an email that I would have to seek some legal opinion because I'm not a lawyer and I'm not a hundred percent certain as to how to proceed in this only person ever ethical ruling by the Board of Ethics against our commission. So I will read for the record what was responded. It is addressed dated April 5th, 2012, John Mayne, Chairman, Clinton Planning and Zoning Commission, Town Hall, 54 East Main Street, Clinton, Connecticut, 6413, in regards to member discussions outside a meeting. Dear John, this letter is in response to your request for an opinion with respect to commission members expressing their opinions regarding commission business outside a commission meeting. This would include, of course, letters to the editor, emails, website posters, as well as oral communications such as phone calls or direct face-to-face conversations. With the, with respect to applications, and these applications are for the commission, whether pending before the commission or the subject of litigation or the likely future subject of an application, discussion of the matter should be strictly limited to during the course of a meeting of the commission. The purpose is to avoid potential claim of predetermination or predisposition bias or ex parte influence. Communications regarding other matters are not prohibited, not prohibited. But care should be taken that such communications do not fall in the above category. Caution should also be taken that communications between members outside of a meeting do not violate the provisions of the Freedom of Information Act. Very truly yours, David M. Royston. I believe that that answers my question and concerns about whether or not I can seat alternates or feel comfortable in the fact that a lot of this has been publicly disclosed, videotaped and presented to the public and basically, basically put the entire town in very public eye for scrutiny by the entire state of Connecticut. I know, I read the opinion page and last week's, even register where the editor himself had to weigh in on that topic. And I try to avoid reading things about opinion papers. From time to time, I can't and sometimes I think it's in the best interest that I do bother to listen to people's opinions because it is important to what people hear. I have plenty from Vincent Semino, and this is the last Harvard News I have, which I will mention later. Final note, Kirk Carr, I did ask your question in good faith and I believe I have no problem seating you as an alternate because you are perfectly within your rights to discuss or videotape or transcribe videotape as you wish, as long as you as a commission member do your best to uphold what you see fit. And I have no problem seating you. I want people to understand it was asked, it was referred to council, done. Okay, this is another long letter, I'm gonna get through this for you, I hope. Dated April 5th, 2012, from Nizala Pickett and Allen PC, from Attorney Royston, let's see, John Mayne, Chairman, Clinton Planning and Zoning Commission, in regard to Ethics Board referral letter. Dear John, I have been advised that pursuant to Clinton Code Ethics Section 7G3, the Board of Ethics has referred the matter of Lisa and Cynthia Watts by letter addressed to you as Chairman of the Planning and Zoning Commission. This referral appears to be the Planning and Zoning, this referral appears to be to the Planning and Zoning Commission on the basis that the Planning and Zoning Commission is, and I quote, "the appropriate appointing or supervisory authority." The Planning and Zoning Commission is not the appointing authority for these two members, nor is it supervisory authority for these two members, except to the limited extent as authorized under the commission bylaws. I have reviewed the memorandum of decision of the Town of Clinton Board of Ethics and the exhibits upon which the Ethics Board based its decision. The purpose of this letter is to advise you and the commission as to what, if any actions, the Planning and Zoning Commission may or should take in regard to the finding of the respondents, Lisa McDonald, Cynthia Watts, I'm sorry, you read that again. The purpose of this letter is to advise you and the commission as to what, if any actions, the Planning and Zoning Commission may or should take in regard to the finding that the respondents, Lisa McDonald and Cynthia Watts, violated Code of Ethics by participating in the discussions and vote on the resubmitted John Watts site plan application, since this is the apparent purpose of the referral from the Board of Ethics under the code. Some review of the history of this matter may be helpful to put the current status of this matter, put the current status of this matter in context. During the early tendency of the appeal of the original denial of his site plan applications from December 2009, East Main Street Trust from December 2009, East Main Street Trust versus Clinton Planning and Zoning Commission, MMXCP 10-6001455-S. John Watts, trustee of the East Main Street Trust, was represented by Attorney Richard Corella. With the consent of the commission, statutory authorized mediation was entered into, which suspended the litigation to allow a possible resolution of the appeal. The original, the original mediation period expired in June 2011, and the trust made a motion to extend it. Attorney Corella advised me that the purpose of extending the mediation period was because the appellate was prepared to make a new application, if the application could be limited to addressing the four reasons specified by the commission, as the reasons for the, for the original deni- Attorney Corella advised me, I'm getting tired here, sorry. Attorney Corella advised me that the purpose of extending the mediation period was because the appellate, appellate was prepared to make a new application, if the application could be limited to addressing the four reasons specified by the commission as the reasons for the original denial. Since the extension required the commission's approval, I requested the matter to be put on the agenda of the commission meeting of July 11, 2011, so I could advise the commission on the purpose of the extension, so as to obtain a position of the commission on the extension motion based upon it, knowing the purpose of the extension. Since this involved pending litigation, the matter was considered an executive session. I do not consider it appropriate to divulge all that occurred during the discussion in the executive session held on July 11, 2011, other than what was disclosed outside the executive session or was disclosed in affidavits to the Ethics Commission, if relevant, and you request me to do so. After the executive session, the extension of the mediation was approved by the commission with the understanding that the trust would reapply for Site Plan approval, limited to address the four reasons for denial. I am of the opinion that this action of the commission was appropriate and in the legal, in, in, in the public interest. It allowed the appellate to access, address the reasons for denial without duplicating in a new application the review of buildings, landscaping, or other items which were unrelated to the reasons for the original denial. During the course of consideration of the new Site Plan application to address the four reasons for denial, Lisa McDonald and Cynthia Watts participated. In my letter to the commission dated September 12, 2011, I expressed my opinion on the disqualification of a family member under Connecticut General Statutes 8-11, and how the commission and the chairman should handle the declination of any member whose disqualification was requested by another member. From a review of minutes of the decision-making meeting of November 14, 2011, the commission and the chairman followed the procedural advice in that letter to the best of my abilities, I'm sure. That was a comment, not part of the letter, on my behalf. The Ethics Commission should, the Ethics Commission included that letter in the findings upon which its decision was based. In my September 12, 2011 letter, I also advised that I found no statutory cause law, statutory case law, which would allow the chairman or the commission to disqualify a member under Connecticut General Statutes 8-11, if the member declined to do so. I am still of that opinion. Additionally, I find no statutory or case law which would allow the commission to revisit or overturn its decision after the statutory period for the decision, as well as the statutory period for an appeal of the decision has passed, as has, as has been suggested with regard to your approval of the Site Plan reapplication on November 14, 2011. In reviewing past correspondence in my file regarding this matter, some of which is confidential, but much of which is in the public record, and in reviewing the minutes of the November 14, 2011 meeting, I do not see what other action you as chairman or the commission could have taken effect to the participation of the three challenged members under Connecticut General Statute 8-11. It was the purpose of my advice in September 12, in my advice in my September 12, 2011 letter, to protect the commission's decision to the extent legal possible in the event if the illegal participation of one or more members. This advice is given in light of Connecticut case law which considers not only whether illegal participation occurred, but also whether the participation affected the subject decision. The participation issues, was the participation illegal under Connecticut General Statutes 8-11, and if so, did it validate the decision, as well as whether there was substantial evidence in the record to support the approval decision that the reasons for denial had been addressed? Could have been appealed, and a court would have decided these issues, however, no appeal was taken. Under the circumstances of this case, I believe the commission and you as chairman acted properly. A decision needed to be made. The issue of disqualification, let me rephrase that, reread it, sorry. Might have read it with a more inflection. It is, it begins with, "A decision needed to be made," period. The issue of disqualification claims and the basis for those claims was put on the record. If no statutory case law or bylaw provision which would authorize you to revisit the commission's decision on the reapplication, or to take any disciplinary action with respect to any member of the commission. If there is any further advice you wish from me, please let me know. Per your request, I will attend your meeting of April 9, 2011. Very truly yours, David M. Royston. I apologize for the way I read it, you do have paper copies, it is now part of the public record. I'm sure it'll go when there's some scrutiny. That is the legal part, that is what I tried to write to present in the Harvard News. Closing for chairman's comments, I only want to remind the commission the gravity of my concerns, my proposed motion that could be made to keep the town from further public embarrassment perhaps, to maybe potentially provide some cooling off period in time for, I mean, I know in good faith that everybody did everything that they could to enact their interpretations of our regulations, their understanding of the ethical code, everyone involved, I believe everyone involved, no matter what action they took, tried to meet timelines for first time decision by the Board of Ethics. I hold no one accountable. By making my statements, I seek only points of interest, I assure you in good faith, because it does seriously affect every elected official, no matter who we are, as this is the only precedence in regard to ethics under this code that was actually needed, where do you see, in 2005, it was Arthur Isaacson whom prevailed, under Peggy Adler, I believe, was the complaint in that case? I mean, in 2009, we, just 2009, we revisited and revised the code, and by its very execution right now, and it's too late, we've already executed it, it's been in the public arena for far as you want, I think. It's a very grave feeling to have people approach you in your office of employment with New Haven Register, knowing what you know, and feeling like you're unable to talk to the public about it because it is before your commission. I understand the stresses that it puts on all of us, but please take my considerations seriously. I don't like to be in that position, it seems very uncomfortable. I have reviewed the entire Watts application, writs of complaints, the letter that I had to read in that meeting on that decision, I have kept my word and uphold, and upholding the, the truth that I would answer any question to lead the council. In regards to the fact that it took less than three months to crucify elected officials in the manner in which it was committed and enacted for the first time ever in this town, I have grave concerns. Three months of their deliberation over a subject that we have to meet this rulebook, and not just the town attorney, the town attorney, the Board of Ethics, they only had to look at this document, this one document. I am responsible for this, along with each and every one of you. I can't tell you the weight of this decision that's been on me, I cannot tell you the gravity of it. I didn't know which way to turn. Thank God I had counsel. I can't afford my own counsel. My wife's been unemployed for three years, I've been under stress. I answered a whole bunch of contracts and codes. Every four years, I revisit my very employment. My contract ran out Sunday morning, 12:01 a.m. I didn't even know if I could go to work. They took my cell phone, my keys, I packed everything on my desk and I went home. But I have revisited both the ethics that I am entitled to for my, my company, there are three that I can tell you, one OP 46, one OP 78, on how to conduct myself and my employees, under my employment. There are ethical codes and standards that I am holding to that I cannot even begin to describe, and I'm only a high school educated guy, union member of Local 12, 1298 here in Hampton, Connecticut, who sat, and most recently, a public view under video camera surveillance from the state protesting that I want a new contract, please, in a very, very tough time in my life. I've had to address this issue before, I've never had to do something like this in my life, I assure you. The weight of it was very, very, very hard to bear, but I did what I was elected to do, and I hope that by my efforts, and the simple fact that the entire process for the Watts property decision took us, let's see, two years, seven, over 700 days of deliberation over a one acre parcel of land in this community? By any means, our standards is the normal view of any process of application, we have to meet it in 65 days. 700 days passed. Truly, if anybody could stand before us in any arena and say that any member, regardless of party affiliation, regardless of personal beliefs, regardless of contracts or faith, I ask, please, gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen of this commission and by extension, I beg the rest of this town, please. Yesterday was Easter, I only know one prayer, I don't go to church, Mr. Horvath represents us on the Board of Ethics and was responsible to uphold this one and only document. All those members of the Board of Ethics had one charge and duty by this document. They were asked, hey, read it, look at the facts, make a decision. Every one of you here are beholden to this document. Look at the breadth and the size of it. In my tenure here as chairman, I have tried to be impartial despite my feelings, I've, I've hopefully displayed that impartiality by reappointing people I care about on this commission, Mr. Delia, Mr. Rossi, worked with Mr. Rossi for a decade? Cynthia was here before I got here, I don't remember any time anybody ever called her to fight. Cindy Wiesmacon, what, four years? We've all been here a lot, it's a volunteer job. People elect us and expect us to hold all our connections to community. If by my relationship to this local, I'm a union member, if by this, what is it? The one and only ruling I have, the only example I have of the first ever unprecedented decision by the Board of Ethics, upholds me to a standard that they didn't even uphold in the entire process they took, flies in the face of reason, which I believe, if by my calculations, is the only reason I'm even chairman, because technically I shouldn't even be sitting here. I laughed about it the other day. I, I was appointed for a two-year term, I served that, Mr. Rossi was chair, I was seated right there in that chair where he's seated now. Tom Lane used to come to every meeting, sat right there. I served that two-year term, only because I decided I read in a, in the Harvard News, I read in the Harvard News, a document, it's, as the Republican Town Council recently had mentioned somewhere, I read, I hate to read so much, I can't remember, but I believe the Republican Town Council begged the people of this town to come forward and serve on some commissions so that we didn't have the same people doing the same job year after year. I agree with them. If it wasn't for the Democratic Town Council, God, 10 years ago, putting this silly little lad in his paper, I wouldn't even bother to have said, hey, I've never been affiliated with a party in my life, I voted, I registered Democrat, I never bothered to bother until I was 34. It was that prompting in that message in that paper that said, hey, come forward, maybe you can do some service in the town, we don't have enough people to serve on commission. It's a volunteer, you gotta give a lot of your time, you gotta put in a lot of hard work, you're sweating, I can't have holidays with my family sometimes, I put two, three nights a month in this. We all do this. It demands that we act with a certain respectable decorum, both publicly and privately, and in regard to each other despite our differences in economics, our employment, our allegiances. Quite frankly, I'll tell you, quite frankly, when I talk to EDC, I honestly go there and think that the EDC and, and the other commissions I talk to have the same values in mind, they care about our community. I don't care whether they posted something I didn't like, or said an opinion I don't like, I don't care. If you bother to come here and cheer us sitting here like I am on a Monday night when I should be home with my daughter, my family, then you've put in the best efforts to begin with, then you keep showing up, I appreciate and applaud every one of you, even the Board of Ethics in their first time ruling, you know what, it sounds like I'm trying to engage the hot knife, you know what, it's a hard thing to do, to decide if your fellow man did or did not act ethically. Oh my God, I tell you what, I only know one person that can decide that for me, and I'm not gonna get that judgment until I'm dead. I know that, I'm only 44, alright? Hopefully, I got a long time, I don't know. The only thing I will say in closing is that on Easter, when my daughter yelled down the staircase, daddy, you're gonna come upstairs, I said, honey, I got work to do, I reminded myself, you know, Jesus, I haven't been in a church- I reminded myself, you know, Jesus, I haven't been in a church in years since my parents stopped going when I was seven. But there was one thing I remembered, and that was, I remember the Lord's Prayer. And the biggest thing I could recommend to any elected official in this town or member of my community in regards to any of this process is that one, that one part of it where where we say, forgive us our trespasses as we forgive those who trespass against us. Please, please, take this decision process on all our items of agenda tide and specifically that one. Before you decide anything, I think I've given you something to think about. And at least in that regard, it warrants tabling the item, allowing at least, you know what, allowing at least time for people to think about what they're doing. Because I'm not a lawyer. I'm not. I've never been to law school. The only closest thing I did to law was when I went through my divorce. As a 20-year-old, I wrote my divorce decree pro se and presented it myself before a judge. That's the only thing I ever did. I was 20, with a high school education. I was capable of doing that by pondering evidence before me and basically taking the time to learn to read and write and understand what I was doing. I'm almost not done with my work, please. I just want to finish and get it over with. I understand you have a question. I tell you what, bring it up under new business for me, please. Please. It's on the agenda, please. Quite frankly, I offer an olive branch and hope that my fellow man takes it and thinks about it. I don't care what you do after my comments. I don't care what you do on the decision. Quite frankly, it's up to you. I'm only able to act as a part of a body of commission members. And that's why we call it Chairman's Comments, Commentary. And I hope you understand that I truly do offer it in the highest regard to my fellow man today. That ends Chairman's comments. I had an agenda here somewhere. Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, I know that we moved item number eight up to item number two. There's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, I'm afraid second. Okay, item number eight is now item number two. Before the ZO report, I'd like to get this clear because...
We should have discussed...
No, no. We had a motion, yeah. We can discuss...
We had to discuss the motion before we vote.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. I have had a lot to say. I'm sorry. I'm trying to catch up. All right, so we had motion. We have a second. I open the floor to discussion.
Mr. Chairman, I was going to ask you, and I understand you've been under a lot of stress. It's evident. And I have sympathy for you in that score. You have asked us, in not so many words, to essentially table this item. And my immediate question is, is it because you feel that we are in some sort of legal danger by discussing it? Because if that's the case, I would rather get opinion of counsel on that, whether it needs to be tabled for on purpose or not.
I absolutely understand your concerns. I absolutely do.
Because this is only going to prolong matters. If you don't address it, I'm going to...
If we, hear me out. Where this Board of Ethics decision, and I do want further discussion. I really would appreciate anybody's discussion on this. I know all of you have been busy doing other matters before this commission, and I appreciate all that work because I've been distracted beyond belief. My concerns are this. Now, I just, I will tell them to you honestly because I have thought about that. And I'm not certain. I'm just going to offer it for deliberation and discussion. My concerns are quite frankly this. When I appeared before the Board of Ethics in good faith, I appeared with the understanding that I had, I thought I did all I could in regards to the questions of who should recuse and why. I knew I was powerless to do anything about it, but when I walked into the room, I had this feeling that when I walked into the room, we did do the best effort. And in fact, I believe it was corroborated in a way by your statements to that effect that you couldn't even be certain of whether or not Lisa should recuse or not. And you only felt comfortable speaking to one other member, and that was Cynthia. And you actually gave evidence to that. And I understand why you had reservations. Believe me, I didn't know after I got in that room that when I walked in, I said, well, we asked attorneys counsel's opinion of planning and zoning, and that's what prompted her to make her decision. So even if we ask counsel's opinion about a matter of ethics, the Board of Ethics basically said it was hearsay and it didn't matter.
That's not what I want to ask.
I'm just, I'm only offering my discussion. Please offer further. I don't mean to imply anything. I'm just saying I have concerns that if we act on it immediately, and this is my concern, and I'll tell you why, because it's the history of Board of Ethics decisions, Mr. Delia. I actually, you won't believe it, but the only way that I could look at the history of the Board of Ethics is I had to visit the website Wikipedia because I was in a hurry last night to actually really try to understand that. I visited Wikipedia and I looked up Peggy Adler because I had heard a rumor that there was a webpage. Mr. Chairman, let me finish. I'm in my... When I got to that webpage, it showed the history of the Board of Ethics decisions in PDF format, and I only refer to the history of it. It said that in 2005, when the Board of Ethics was confronted and a selectman was accused, that selectman was found not in violation of the code, and that's fine. And Peggy Adler addressed the issue in that historical document that said she was concerned that it wasn't taken care of seriously and that the table was basically pushed, the item was pushed away again and it disappeared. And then in 2009, because of Peggy Adler's persistence in the matter, she diligently pursued the matter. And in 2009, the ethical code was revisited and revised at her prompting, which was good and wise and a good choice. Now, at this juncture, I am concerned that because the 30-day period according to the ethical code has passed, all concerns of the ethical code have been met. We are now the only part of our government that can ask the question where the selectmen, who also had the opportunity to look at the Code of Ethics before making their decision, they looked at the same code. I looked at it and said, there's a conflict of interest. My first question was to a fact, there's a conflict of interest regarding exactly only the members that were present during the deliberation and the relationship between the town's attorney and one candidate. And if that's true, how can we safeguard that this code will be revisited without having to present arguments to the selectmen and fight for them to pay attention to this code and to take it as seriously as we do? So what I mean by that is, if we table it, it goes on to next month's agenda. True. We could theoretically table the ethical code indefinitely. So...
No, no, our issue is not the issue. We don't have to answer. There's no timeline for a answer. The Board of Ethics is not the issue. We're not here to review a Board of Ethics decision. We're here to decide whether we have any means by which to either reverse the decision or not. And we just heard a opinion of counsel. He says, no. That's simple. We're not reversing that decision. We don't have the power to do so as a commission.
I agree.
You, as a chairman, can talk about all you want, but your comments, your comments are not my comments. I am not in agreement with you that the Board of Ethics should be challenged in its deliberations in any way, shape, or form.
By no means.
We are the Planning and Zoning Commission, and I'm going to insist that you allow me to speak because I've listened to you for an hour and 15 minutes. Sorry. And as a member, I too, I'm an elected member, I receive votes. Just because I'm not the chairman doesn't mean I don't get to speak, Mr. Main. And what I'm saying is, we have counsel right here. And it's a very simple proposition to pose the question to counsel. Is it appropriate or not for we members to deliberate on that, I don't even have the word, item eight, which states, response to Board of Ethics? Our response may very well be, and I'm not saying it is, we have nothing to do because we're not empowered to do anything, whether to remove members on a big question that you have found to have had conflicts, or whether the decision could be reversed. We can't do either. What is wrong with reaching a conclusion on that point? And then if we should choose, as members of a commission, to decide whether we like the fact that two of our members were found to have had conflicts of interest by our Board of Ethics? I'm not here to decide whether Ken McDonald, Town Counsel, Mr. Royston, any of these nice individuals have... So why am I visiting the entire Board of Ethics decision and the history of it?
The only reason, the only reason, the only, absolutely the only reason I have asked that we table is that I have concerns with the Board of Ethics findings directly as it relates to how they violated the same code.
But that's not our business.
Yes, it is. If we act on it, are we corporate? Are we party to something?
We're a Planning and Zoning Commission. We're not a Board of Ethics.
I'm sorry. I'm not here to do anything but ask them points of interest.
It's a point of interest that I don't agree with. So when you made comments for an hour and 15 minutes, you want to enter it in the record, you want us to move the table of matter that I don't think should be tabled. That's my interest.
Completely. This is discussion. I don't know why you're yelling.
I'm yelling because I don't know that we're ever going to get off this topic.
I think our discussion... Yeah, the motion is simply to move this to item two.
I thought that's what it was.
And so the question is, why do you want to table this? I think you've answered that. And I don't know whether we agree or disagree. There's anybody else, I guess. I shouldn't be the moderator. The thing that troubles me is that you filibustered for an hour and almost a half, and now we're finally asking some questions, and you still want to dominate. I listened to these...
Absolutely, sir.
Wait a second. Excuse me. I listened to the comments of the decision. You dominated then. If you want to be, no, you did. If you want to be the chairman, you have to moderate. If you wanted to debate, then you can debate, but right now, you're sitting in the chairman's chair, and you should be moderating. Now, we have something on the floor, and I think we should, you moderate and let people discuss it. And you said you had your say, so let some other people discuss this.
Then I apologize. Absolutely apologize for your concerns. We need to call the board of... We should call for the vote then to move it down to... I was trying to answer questions for Mr. Delia about the validity of whether or not should we act on it or not. And I was distracted by that. I apologize.
Sean, votes been called. All right, there is no more discussion.
I'm sorry. I really don't want people to be angry. I really don't. I apologize.
Okay.
Call for the vote.
Please? All in favor? Opposed? I'm staying. Okay, motion counted. It is now item two, and I open item two, discussion of response to Board of Ethics. It was open, I like that. I acquiesce, obviously. It is open to the floor. I open it to the floor.
I think that we should simply ask Mr. Delia's question of our attorney, and that is, basically, are we legally, would we be legally liable for being held with this? Which is what I think that your question was.
My question is, is there any danger even discussing this issue and in fact, based upon your letter of opinion, do we have, we empowered as a board to take any kind of action on the decision that was made several months ago with the full participation of two members who have since been found to have had a conflict?
I'm going to answer the second part first, which is, do you have any authority to do anything with respect to the original decision? And my letter, I think, speaks for itself, the letter of April 5th, which says, I find no jurisdiction for this commission to do anything with respect to the decision that was made 14/2011 to approve the reapplication with claims of illegal participation. Scott, that question right there, I think you have no authority to do anything about that. Any motion to overturn the decision, reconsider, put it back on the table would be illegal and improper in my opinion. The second part of it is, as I understand your question, is there any danger in the commission discussing the referral and with respect to the need to seek an opinion from the Ethics Board as to whether it would be illegal for the commission to discuss this? And I had some phone conversation with Mr. Main concerning this, and I expressed to him my opinion of that on the two questions he had asked me, that there was no legal prohibition for the commission to discuss this matter.
So we can discuss it in your opinion?
In my opinion, number one is, the question that was posed to me first of all was since there were two members who were respondents at the Board of Ethics Commission hearing, and there were other members who provided testimony either by affidavit, which was Mr. Main, and I'm not sure whether there was another affidavit or any other participation, or whether members were just present. And I said that in my opinion, that did not constitute attending a meeting, that there was no issue as to whether or not a quote forum, having been at the Ethics Commission hearing, that that somehow affected the ability of those persons to act or claim some... Second question he asked me was whether or not there was, whether or not it would be appropriate to seek a legal opinion with respect to members discussing the Ethics Commission hearing. And I advised Mr. Main. I said that, first of all, I didn't think it was necessary. However, if a person, an official, Mr. Main is an official, wishes to seek an advisory opinion, he has to put it into writing. And I recommended to him that if he were going to pursue that, any issue he had, that he put that in writing. And I think that Mr. Main attempted to follow that advice in his comments. I don't, my opinion is, let's just hold with their name, that there... that there is no ethical violation of this commission to discuss the referral letter.
Thank you.
The answer to that question is, I find no ethical violation for this commission to discuss that question. If we get down to what a motion might be, then I might have an opinion as to whether that is an appropriate matter for the commission to... Action for the commission to take. It is a part of your question, but I think I should put it in because it is an issue which is, under Code of Ethics, you are to require... You are to respond within thirty days. But it doesn't say what happens if you don't. I consider that to be, under the circumstances, directed, that it simply is a direction that it should be done timely. And given that, that was the nature of the letter that was a priorly dictated to be sent to the Ethics Commission before the deadline. I don't know whether you have that letter. But that letter, as Mr. Main indicated, basically said, the commission, under its bylaws, can only act at a duly-called meeting as a commission. And that he could not respond to that letter without a meeting, but he had placed the matter on the agenda of this meeting. So I think that thirty-day period is passed. I think, however, the commission can and should act on the referrals without expressing any opinion as to what that action should be.
Well, as I understand it, even a non-response is a response to the Board of Ethics. So if we have not responded within thirty days, we have in essence responded by not responding. So I'm not concerned necessarily as an individual with whether they get our response within thirty days. The question I have is whether if... Whether this board, by discussing these issues in any way places itself in any jeopardy ethically, which is, which seems to be the problem of the chairman's comments. And I don't agree with that. That's why I'm asking you, legal counsel, for an opinion on that. Are we placing ourselves in jeopardy?
In discussion is not an ethical violation of the Clinton Ethics Code.
I didn't think so. So we can discuss it, and we can tell the Board of Ethics whatever we decide as a group. We can decide not to do anything because we are not empowered to do anything, correct?
This is...
I didn't say you were not empowered to do anything. You are empowered...
We can't reverse our decision.
In my letters I indicate, you can't reverse the decision, nor can you exercise disciplinary action on the members.
Right. We can't remove the members.
Cannot remove them.
And I think, I clearly understand that. So I fail to understand, however, what the chairman's concerns were. And that's why I, maybe a little more loudly than necessary, raised the issue because we've been here now an hour and a half. So my point is...
I can see it just to that because because in my conversation with Mr. Main as to whether or not there will be an inquiry of the Board of Ethics, I indicated to him I thought that it wasn't necessary. He brought up a very good point. He said the Board of Ethics has felt that it could disregard the opinion of counsel in led it advice I had given previously. And I have to acknowledge that that's correct.
Can I just ask a couple of questions, Mr. Royston? On September 12th, you did... You had a letter that you sent to the chairman, to Mr. Main. And then it said that the participation of a disqualified person can render an action of a commission nullity. The section nine dash two of the Code of Ethics of the Regarding Code of Ethics of the Town Charter indicates that a violation, a transaction, a decision shall render the same voidable by the Board of Selectmen or a court of competent jurisdiction. So I guess the thing is, is the Board of Selectmen, all they've done so far is ask for the resignations of the two parties. And they've said that there was a thirty-day or something limitation on a reversal. So the question I have is, is this nullity that you referred to, is there a limitation on that? I think usually the limitations are for people, other parties who want to appeal something that was decided by the board. I don't think it relates to a decision that's rendered null because of a improper participation. So I guess I'd like some legal counsel on exactly what this language means. The Board of Selectmen has sort of sent it back to... After the planning and zoning, I don't think they sent us the letter. Is that correct? Mr. Main, have you gotten any communication from them?
Other than... Other than their decision other than their action and message back to the Board of Ethics prior to the thirty-day period, that the only information that I have seen from the Board... From the Selectmen's office Julie, did anything else come in that I'm not ready to look at the time?
Did you get a chance to watch the YouTube I sent you of that all of them?
I... Okay, that's fine. But I was at both hearings of the Ethics Commission...
You mentioned that.
Of the Board of Ethics. Was it both hearings? And I was also required to provide the hearing to them before those hearings. So I believe I was there, and no, I did not review.
But anyway, the Board of Selectmen basically sort of sidestepped this thing where they could nullify it or void it, and sort of sent it back to us. Although they haven't sent it to us officially in writing. I was in a meeting, and I have the YouTube of what the Board of Selectmen said. And he also said that this... It couldn't be reversed because of the timeframe. But it looks to me like if there's a disqualified party participating, that there might be an opportunity for the Board of Selectmen or a court of competent jurisdiction to reverse that. Am I reading this correctly?
What did you... What section?
This is section nine dash two of the Charter, section B.
Of the Charter?
Charter has nine dash two Code of Ethics. It's in the Charter. It's in the Town Charter. It's section nine dash two regarding Code of Ethics. As does any officer or employee of the town, as financial direct or indirect on any transaction or decision of any agency to which the town is a party, shall disclose interest to the board. We shall record such disclosure upon official record. Violation of any such officer of this provision with knowledge expressed or implied of any person or corporation participating in such contract, transaction, or decision shall render the same voidable by the Board of Selectmen or a court of competent jurisdiction. Is there a limitation on that in terms of time?
You're quoting from the Town of Clinton Charter.
Right.
Which is saying if there's a violation of the Code of Ethics, the Board of Selectmen may render that decision...
It shall render the same voidable.
It shall render the decision voidable by a court of competent jurisdiction or by the Board of Selectmen. If it's gonna be by court, somebody else to take it to court, in my opinion, they will not be successful in overturning the decision because they would have had the opportunity to appeal it, number one. Number two, I think the other part of it is the action of the Board of Selectmen, how they allow more any sort of contract that could be voided by it. I doubt whether that provision is intended to apply to voiding a decision of a Planning and Zoning Commission. And without looking at whatever time period, one would think that if it's going to be voided by action, it would have to be done during the appeal period of the decision which they seek to void.
It wouldn't have been very practical within the timeframe that it takes to get the Ethics decision. I mean, that was almost impossible for that to occur in a term of time.
Well, if there was a... The claim... That's one of the reasons for putting the claims on record, so that the public record of that decision disclosed that there were claims that persons should have been disqualified.
And then you're...
So I think probably that question ought to be more appropriately asked of the Town Attorney than attorney to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Well, and then your notes said, second, the participants... Participations of disqualified persons can render this the action of the commission nullity.
That's the statement from case law. Out of appeal.
I see.
There are the cases in which the decision for the Planning and Zoning Commission was declared to be a nullity. That was the court's word, based upon the illegal participation of a member. I cited my letter of complaint versus the Town of Old Sabre, where a zone change was declared a nullity by reason of the participation of a family member in the decision to change his...
Thank you.
I could ask you a question, Mr. Carr.
Yes.
I didn't review the Town Charter in that section. You're saying that any decision made by any official... If you could read that again.
You wanna look at it?
I'd rather you read it.
Any officer or any employee of the town who has a financial interest direct or indirect in any contract, transaction, or decision of any agency to which the town is a party shall disclose the interest to the Board of Selectmen, which shall record such disclosure upon the official record of their meetings. Violation of any section of this provision with the knowledge expressed or implied of any person or corporation participating in such contract, transaction, or decision shall render the same... Shall render the same voidable by the Board of Selectmen or a court of competent jurisdiction.
So it sounds like the Board of Selectmen could do that?
Or a court of competent jurisdiction.
It's a mandatory or...
Yes. And they sort of sent it to us. They sort of threw it to us.
I think the point Mr. Carr is making, and I don't want to put words in his mouth, is that the Board of Selectmen referred it or remanded it back to us when, in essence, they're the empowered body, if anybody is under the Charter, to render our decision, which by virtue of the Board of Ethics findings, was tainted. And if the Board of Selectmen chooses to void that decision because it's now been found to have been tainted by the participation of two members that had a conflict, found to have had a conflict, the Board of Selectmen is the proper authority under our Charter to make that decision, not the Planning and Zoning Commission. In other words, the burden is not ours.
I do understand that. The only thing that I'm worried about is that same language could be... Could it be used to overturn or nullify an unethical act on the part of the Board of Ethics?
Wait a second. That's not our...
I don't know. That's why I wanted to ask the Board of Ethics in the first place.
But this what...
What that said was that any act... Any conflict had to be disclosed, correct? Okay. It's the act of not disclosing that can rule it nullified. So it was disclosed. Any interactions were disclosed. So this does... That doesn't apply.
See, that's what bothers me with the Board of Ethics decision, was they...
Well, that... Sean, it's not the Board of Ethics, okay? It's that part there of the Charter though.
I'd stay.
Okay? So because we... It had been disclosed that Lisa Ruben had worked on the first application. And it had been disclosed that Cynthia was the brother... Or, excuse me, the sister of the applicant, okay? Those had been disclosed. So since that's about disclosure, it isn't nullified.
Right, but technically, it says to disclose it to the Board of Selectmen. It says disclose to the Board of Selectmen. I mean, the fact it was disclosed doesn't necessarily fulfill the requirement of disclosure under this.
My only point in all of this is that it's not up to us to render our decision moot. It's up to the Board of Selectmen, if anybody, to do so.
Well, I don't think they have the authority to do it either.
I don't think... I don't think they have the authority to do it under that section of the Charter.
Well enough.
You had read the last section. And as I said, okay, you're not reading from the Code of Ethics, you're reading from the Charter.
Right.
And when you read the earlier section on it, I do not believe it applies to this set of facts.
But my point is still, it's not nullized.
And even if I am wrong, it's not up to the Planning and Zoning.
Right. About the only thing that we could do against this is take it to a court of competent jurisdiction. I mean, that's about the only thing that...
No, I don't think you could.
No?
I don't think that section...
Also, when you say "we," you mean Planning?
Yeah, Planning and Zoning decided that we wanted to...
Just for clarification, I didn't understand that.
I don't think that's what the section says or says.
I move that we inform the Board of Ethics under their request that we address this issue, that we inform the Board of Ethics, that we have no power, after any consulting with counsel, that we have no power as a commission to overturn our previous decision, regardless of the fact that two members, found later to have had a conflict, participated in that decision. That's our response to the Board of Ethics. I second it for discussion.
Thank you. Gentlemen, again, to try to clarify what I was trying to point out prior, that led you to become aggravated with me.
I apologize for being aggravated.
I know you do.
It was actually your attempt to shut me off.
My wife accused me of that also. I apologize. It was a very bad habit. I will try and safeguard that in the future. The reason that I feel that we should try to keep it open is I am afraid that if we... All right, let me rephrase. If we keep it on the agenda beyond the fact that we need to respond, then it would force our government to at least... They have to go look at the procedures of the Ethics Commission, of the Board of Ethics, and review our ethical code so that we don't run into questions of it again. If I could point out that it was quite possible that something, that the entire procedure could have been tainted, then anybody could be brought forth. And I'm afraid that if I... If we table it, that they could... The powers that they might choose to just not revisit it for a long time. I mean, that's my only concern, and I'm gonna leave that on the table the way it is. You guys can decide and discuss it according to this motion. The motion is on the table, as described by Mr. Lee respectfully. Let's go ahead and find that discussion because I just wanted to make sure I understood what I meant, or what I was trying to imply.
I mean, to that point, I know that I was in a Selectmen's meeting where the discussion of the Ethics Code was discussed. And it does sound like they intend to revisit it, that there's some...
God, I hope so.
That they have some issues with it for the... For some of the reasons that Michael McDonald resigned from Water Pollution Control. I mean, he's the only casualty of this so far, which seems extremely off-target. I mean, it's a... I see no reason for that to be the case. But anyway, but, you know, I don't... I think they are gonna revisit it. I don't think... I mean, to me, you're never gonna... All laws, all documents, everything is flawed. You're never gonna have a perfect ethics. And it's never gonna happen. Maybe you can make it better. There's probably always room to improve it. But I think that the other part of this is if the parties involved wanted to bring an appeal, they had a time to bring an appeal. And the points that you've made were certainly subject, could have been subject to that appeal. And I believe that time has expired, and I don't believe they've appealed. So it seems to me that if there's no appeal, then the decision stands.
I pointed out explicitly in my dissertation with my friend, and I apologize. I pointed out specifically that... I, I pointed out explicitly in my dissertation with my friend, and I apologize, I pointed out specifically that the period of appeal is passed and that it does stand. I made that as part of my statement, and I do agree with you on that. I absolutely do, and I do agree that this discussion was only to send a response back to them as to what, anything we would do about their decision. This decision is made, as I said, the process went through beginning and end. I don't intend to try to overturn or even ask. I only thought that by asking the question of Board of Ethics in good faith, whether or not, in other words, if we act on it and they're found by some other future thing, because they already said in their findings that they can look back to 2009, or potential, possible liabilities in the future, I believe, is what he described in his, that precedence. If I, if I say, I just don't want to say, I agree with their findings against our membership, and then set the precedence that they can utilize that against any other members of this commission anyways, or any other office that somebody is duly elected to in the interim between now and when it's discussed, and I'll, I'll explain further why, all right? And I just want you to hear me out, because I'm just going to say it, and let you guys discuss. I am a father of a child in the town of Clinton, who is in the child, the child, my child is in the public school system in this town. I am on a land regulatory commission where I make decisions on land. Does that mean that as a father, I have a personal, fungitory interest in my child's welfare and that I should recuse myself from any decisions about a new high school? Because if I do that, I could be found by anybody who might disagree with me, or just simply state to the Board of Ethics that I have a personal, financial, or perfunctory interest in my decision process about a new high school? And that's, and it only comes to mind because it is not a referendum. Now, as a citizen, I can vote on it, but as a commission member, can that be a tool to, if we utilize this decision so broadly, the decision is made, its final is stance? But I want that. I want to make clear to the Selectmen that they should definitely revisit the ethical code, because if it is such an important code, and we are to be held accountable to that degree, that's why I put this sign up. If I have to deliberate again on the use of the police commission's driveway, maybe because of my affiliation to a union then, and they are a police union, would that be defined then as a personal interest? And that's my only concern? If, if we could add to our agenda at a future date and actually, you know, let's just say, for sake of argument, if we say, for item eight tonight, response to Board of Ethics, we decide to respond, I would like to have your way in on the concept of, you know, maybe if we can't act as, as a commission, maybe we should at least revisit the idea to the Selectmen that, look, this was a, an unprecedented response, and we want to safeguard the electorate that put us in this position to represent them as a community, that our connections to the community should not make us, enforce us, feel so unable to act, because we have to actually look at every aspect of our lives on every decision now, to the point and degree that future liabilities? The fact that I have a tattoo, and that man who haunts a tattoo parlor, he asked on the floor, he said, do any of you members have a tattoo? If I raise my hand and say, yeah, I have a tattoo, if I said that, hey, yeah, I got a tattoo, the moment I disclose that information, could I be held accountable for the fact that I have a tattoo? And I might have a personal interest in donating a shot. I've been to his shop, I've had my hair cut at his shop. And I caution, Alan Kravitz on the record publicly stated he has his hair cut on that shop, does that mean for that single affiliation, there, he has a personal interest because he's, he's enriching his friend, he probably knows him? How, to what depth and breadth does it go? And that's all, I wanted to make sure that if we, if we make a decision in response on item eight, will it get it off the agenda and out of the public eye?
Will it be swept up in the chart?
And Mr. Carr has already answered, he told me to know, he's in good faith, he says, I believe they're going to talk about.
But that's not the point. The point is, if any of us, who are included, has any issue with any member of the Board of Ethics having potentially a conflict, all you need to do is what Ms. Adler did, and file a complaint. And they will pick it up, and that member, I'm sure, would recuse himself, and the whole Board of Ethics would deliberate and make another finding. So, that's the point. It's not for us to decide whether they acted properly, improperly, or, that's, we're here to tell them what we can do if anything. And I made a motion, it's been seconded, we're having a discussion.
Great, and again, and again, as part of that discussion, I only brought it up in regard to us as commission members, the question, I, I will let it stand, I asked the question. If we act on this, are we compulsory to anything and held unaccountable? And, and the reason I said I should, that we should ask specifically, that it said, you can ask points of opinion from the Ethics Board of Ethics, and, and you will not be held accountable if you follow their absolute decision, and therefore, we would absolutely, by asking the question, be, you know, we are not held accountable anymore. And I think that's a responsible thing to ask. If in fact, the code demands that we ask questions, that we answer them. So that, for instance, and I'll give you a case in point, if either member of this commission felt that they were not certain if they should disqualify themselves, by making sure that we ask for an opinion from the Board of Ethics prior to participating, we could protect ourselves as commission members and as officials. And, and the only reason is, I don't think anybody actually asked that question, because quite frankly, at any time, Ms. Adler could have asked to ensure that people who should have been disqualified did not vote, if she had filed her complaint prior, when it was first disclosed that people had concerns publicly, then if she filed her complaint as a point, even if she didn't want to offend somebody and just asked for the point of opinion, she could have asked the point of opinion and had a response to us before we even voted, in that four-month period, we could have avoided that issue for this commission.
Mr. Chairman, the whole thing could have been avoided if when I raised the issue at a meeting, we had deliberated and decided to ask counsel whether or not it was counsel's opinion, whether one of our members had a conflict or not, and that, all of this would have been safe.
I, I would just like to say that I, I think that we need to go ahead and vote on the motion again. And the point is, we do need to get this, get past this item one, and I think we've discussed it thoroughly.
I think so too. I absolutely agree with Michael Rossi and Mr. Leo.
Thank you.
Is there any more comments? We have a motion on the floor? Any more comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Stating? Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make another motion, I guess, regarding the same matter.
We make two motions on the same thing?
Well, it's regarding the same situation.
Please, please, I'm sorry. I wanted to make sure.
Would be that we would discuss the, the recommended resignations that have been asked for by the Board of Selectmen, and I'd like that, I'd like to make a motion that we discuss that.
I would like to wait until somebody makes a second on that, so we can actually bring it to the floor for discussion.
Because the motion was to, to actually discuss it, right?
For you second the motion, I open the floor to discussion.
Oh, wait, I have to vote on that.
Oh, you're right.
Yeah, you're right.
Discussion?
We're going to discuss the discussion.
We're going to discuss whether or not we're going to. I'm sorry.
What's the point of discussing something that really?
I think the motion is maybe, maybe, maybe you ought to make a motion, which you want us to do. Then we can discuss.
All right, I'd like to make the motion that we.
Wait, wait, I'm sorry.
I'll withdraw my motion.
Withdraw the motion, hold your second, and then.
Make a new one.
Make your new motion, please.
My motion is that I'd like to make a motion that we follow the direction that the Board of Selectmen have established, and that we ask for the resignation of Cynthia Watson, Ash McDonald, from the Planning and Zoning Board.
Okay, do we have a second for discussion?
Second, okay. I open the floor to discuss.
I feel that these two women have been vilified enough. I am opposed to this motion. I am strongly opposed to having either of these members resign, and I'll be very pissed off at both of them if they do. They have served this community, and they have served this board for a long time, and they have put a lot of effort into this town, and it really ticks me off to see this, and I've got to shut up before I say something stupid.
Before I say anything, I believe as chairman, and in my position, as Mr. Leo pointed out, I've said enough tonight, and I will remain silent on the issue of the commission to discuss. If you need me to interfere because I guess he is, please, I'll try to pay attention to that. I won't add.
Since I've made the motion, I will say that I know that these people have been involved and active on the board and have contributed to it. I also know that it's been my feeling all along that because of the controversy that was created when they did not recuse themselves, when I thought it should have been, and it was something that I personally brought up at many meetings here, I think that it has gone to our Board of Selectmen, who have discussed it, and I think that since they have come forward and said that in their opinion, that it would be in the best interest remaining for the integrity of the Planning and Zoning Commission to maintain its integrity, and I think that is a big, big issue. I think that our opinion, the public's opinion, the Planning and Zoning Commission right now will forever be in question if these two people do not resign, respectfully resign. Thank you for your services, but I think it's time that you should resign.
Well, I like that in a few sense. I have felt a certain degree of, of, I don't want to call it guilt, because it's not guilt, a certain degree of responsibility for what has occurred by first challenging one of our members prior to this, for what I perceive to have been a conflict. It's unfortunate that it has taken this path and has led us to this, but there is no question that we, as a, as a commission, have been called into question as a result of everything that's happened. I have enormous respect for Mike Russell, and I understand his strong feelings as he just expressed them. But it really would be to the benefit of the commission, if these two members, and I too recognize them as having contributed greatly for many, many years, but it really would be to the benefit of this commission, and it would stop all the chatter that I hear, that I read about editorial minutia registered, for God's sake. It would stop all that if they were to do the unselfish act of resigning. Certainly from my perspective, and I've been placed in that position, I wouldn't hesitate, because it is not, it is not worth it for the town. Ultimately, we serve for the benefit of the town, and when we approach it that way, it makes things rather simple. If you're doing it for the benefit of the town, then maybe you have to leave for the benefit of the town. The longer this continues, the longer we deliberate, the longer we discuss it, the longer the Clinton patch, the New Haven Register, the Harvard News, ring it up, and it will happen again. These two members will be questioned again because of what's happened, and it's unfair to them to have it continue. It's certainly unfair to us as a commission, and that's why I would say it would be the right thing to do. I'm not saying I enjoy it, I'm not saying it's proper necessarily, I'm just saying it would be right for us to move beyond this. That's my view. And again, Mike, I understand your position completely. You've served a lot longer than most of us here, and I defer to a lot of your judgment, but in this case, I think it would, it would be beneficial to know that the commission would be the power.
My opinion is very simple. I think it's up to the two individuals to make this decision. I don't feel it's my decision to make, nor any other member of this commission to make that decision. This has to be, in my opinion, a decision made by these two board members, and I think they need to think about their actions, I think they need to think about the Board of Ethics decision, and my opinion is, whatever their decision is, I'll stand by it.
I'd like to move to table this motion for one month, to give them a chance to do what you suggested, and with, I would prefer to salvage this as much as possible on their own volition rather than having us press them and, and bring this up at the, at the next meeting. I mean, I, I agree that it's something that they should be considering. I agree with what Anselmo said, I think it's, I also agree with what Michael said. I mean, I think these are two of our most qualified members. I mean, it would be a real loss to the, to the commission. On the other hand, I think there's, there's a much bigger picture here, and I would, I would urge them to think very hard about it, and perhaps we could revisit this a month from now.
One second.
I don't, you have two motions, it was what you would recommend, I believe.
I'm moving to table the motion as it's handled.
You can do a motion to table the motion.
We can do a motion subsequent to the first motion to table.
Regarding that first motion.
Does that have to be seconded as well?
That was seconded.
You did second it? Further discussion?
Actually, a table can be discussed.
All right, so, I'm sorry, I never had that map before. So, we have the original motion, and then another motion to table the original motion?
Right, for one month. And you just have to call a vote on that?
And not have the discussion?
At this time, no.
No, no discussion on table.
And at this point?
Both.
Both are voted.
Both are voted. Everybody's okay with that? Okay. All in favor, and before we go, because of gravity, I should have to vote on this too as chair, it is within my rights of our bylaws, and I will, for the public good, and as you said, for the trust of the public, I will vote on it as well. All in favor to table?
Aye.
Dennis is opposed? Abstaining?
I can't vote. He's not seated, actually.
Then that motion carries, it is tabled, to be voted upon at our next meeting. Was that part of the?
The next, with the next, thirty days, not the, not the next year.
On our next meeting.
The next regular one coming.
Right.